Or maybe we won't.
No, I forget.
Okay, we'll have a moment of side meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our county administrator, Renetta McClure. Good morning, Renetta.
We have three exonerations for $351.23 minutes from November 10th, 2021. Vouchers: General County Fund, $716,067122, 911, $10,0071943, Chestnut Ridge Park, $6,047066, Camp Muffley, $3,073229, Mason Dixon Park, $41662, Recreation Levy, $1,0015689, Assessors' Valuation, $3,0069357, Star City TIF, $20387865, Morgantown Industrial TIF, $4629787, Mont General TIF, $3611844, and University Town Center TIF, $1,057650708. Purchasing Card vouchers: General County, $16,2028, 911, $7,037761, Chestnut Ridge Park, $89972, Camp Muffley, $1,0014592, Mason Dixon Park, $6419, for a voucher total of $2,956,35244. We have physician vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for November 17th, 2021.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I believe you have a separate fiduciary item?
Yeah. We have a petition to remove the administratix DBN for the Richard Lewis Coleman Estate.
What's the commission's pleasure?
Moved for approval to a fiduciary commissioner.
Second?
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anything else?
Tick.
Introduction to new employees, personnel changes.
Um, I believe we just have one. And that is for the Youth Services Center, Megan Wagner. She is a part-time relief worker for the Youth Services Center for $13.20 an hour, not eligible for benefits. Her first day of employment is November 17th. So.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Okay. You have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, any others?
No, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. I'll now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the commission, just come forward and provide their name and address. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Taryn Moser. I reside at 193 Paradise Circle, Montague County. I just wanted to address the Ridgedale School intersection of Goshen Road and 119. Not only am I a parent of two sons there, Ridgedale's an amazing school, but that intersection is very dangerous, not only for pulling in and out onto Goshen Road, but also onto US-119. I travel that road every day, of course, I live out there. And the speed limit is 55. I call it the Grafton Expressway because most people go faster than that. So getting out of that intersection right now, it is posted at 35, but looking into consideration of an actual school zone there and to actually enforce it, I think it would make things a lot easier for getting our kids to school, not only the buses and ourselves, but I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration for the school. Crosswalks probably not advisable, but, you know, big picture, a roundabout or a stoplight would be amazing, but just to get persons to slow down in that intersection would be gratefully helpful. That's all I have this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll close the public comment session. Proclamation, GIS Day. Do we have somebody who wants to make a presentation?
Yep, Mike can do that.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, today is obviously Wednesday, November 17th.
Mike, you need to say good morning.
For the record, you need to say who you are.
Oh, sorry, I'm Mike Paul, I'm the GIS coordinator here in Montague County.
Thank you.
Uh, do you want to know where I live? Maybe not.
That's okay.
All right. Today is GIS Day across the globe, Wednesday, November 17th. This started in 1999, brought on directly by Esri, which is our GIS main software company. So, but the proclamation, would you like me to read it full on?
Sure.
Okay. Whereas, Montague County recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout Montague County. And whereas geographic information systems, GIS, technically, oh, excuse me, technologically allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond, and whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas, the Montague County acknowledges those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens, and whereas to recognize and support the efforts of nonprofits who work on activities to improve conservation, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world. And whereas having a day of GIS activities open to students, citizens, and government leaders will help promote STEM education, inspire others to a higher calling to use technology for good, and whereas Montague County is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better service residents and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Now, therefore, the Montague County Commission do hereby proclaim November 17th, 2021, as GIS Day in Montague County and encourage each individual to join in the recognition of the value and application of this technology dated November 17th, 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved for approval.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? Thank you, Mike. I'm sure we'll be talking a little bit about GIS later, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is Colleen Coon Grants.
I have a few for reimbursements. The first one is for the VOCA grant in the amount of $8,464.08. The next one is the SEEP grant in the amount of $2,388.11. Then I have the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Save Communities, in the amount of $454.77. The next one is Click It or Ticket in the amount of $473.47. Impaired Driving for $1,871.96. And the last one is Distracted Driving for $64.50.
Moved for approval for all of them.
Second?
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
We don't have anything on the agenda, but a few items did come in this week. We got a letter from Frontier regarding the payphone that's in the hallway on the first floor. They have not had any usage on that for some time, so they are going to come and remove that payphone from the lobby.
Didn't know we still have them.
Didn't know it worked.
I didn't know any still existed, so.
Uh, we also received a request from the Scotts Run Museum and Trail regarding ARP funds.
I'd recommend we just put that in our ARP file?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Bloom, do you have any correspondence you'd like to have?
No.
Commissioner Arnett?
No.
Okay, I don't have any, so we'll move on to the next item. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. To consider for approval, requisition number 54 for the University Town Center Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $2,512.50, and that is going to be paid to Munichap for their services for the district.
Okay. We have a motion to approve requisition 54 as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Consideration to approve request by Main Street Morgantown to place a holiday tree on the Courthouse Square from December 30th, or December 3, 2021, to January 1, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Barbara, would you like to talk, uh, come up and just explain the, uh, the schedule for the parade and the Christmas tree lighting?
Yes, well, we would like to have the, first of all, my name is Barbara Watkins. I'm the executive director of Main Street Morgantown.
Thank you.
So, um, yes, well, the parade, you know, is going to be on December, oh, okay. Wasn't sure, so I wasn't sure the rules.
No, you're at the podium, yeah.
Okay. Wasn't sure the rules. As you know, the, the JC's Christmas Parade will be held again this year, will be back this year, I should say, and they're looking to make it a really nice event, a huge event, in the, in, starting at 6:30 in the downtown. We're working with, again, we're, uh, Main Street, we're working with the 4-H to have something on the Courthouse Square that day, so we'd like to have the tree installed. And I know in the past that the county employees, they do a wonderful job, have, once it's delivered and everything, they put it up and they decorate it and they take it down, and we can't tell you how much we appreciate all of that. But so, so I think it's a great addition to have that for the parade, and so I hope we can continue that for years to come, and I hope we can get a tree big enough, from what I've been reading. But, um, so that's, and I'd also like to thank the county commissions for all the support that they give us throughout the year. You know, I hope you've been able to come down for the Arts Walk and the activity we've had on the Courthouse Square during those events, for International Street Festival, for Hops on the Mon. I think it's important, um, asset that we have here in our district, and I thank you for the use of it and the continued use for in the future, especially next year when hopefully we will have, be having more events in the downtown, and we won't be limited. So, thank you, and if there's any questions, or maybe you're not allowed, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to ask questions.
Well, you have, so it's December 6th at 6:30, correct?
Correct.
For the parade?
For the parade.
And then you'll have events around that?
We'll have events, we'll have events around, actually, our, we'll have, be having Small Business Saturday on November 27th, and then for, as, as in the years past, but then we're looking to make sure that we get the tree up before, before the parade, so that it'll be, therefore, we can have caroling during the parade, or before the parade starts, and a few other activities in the Courthouse Square.
So is there a specific time for the tree lighting? Is it 6:00, 6:15, or?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. We haven't really discussed exactly the time for the tree lighting. Of course, we'll have to get, need to get somebody down there with a ladder to be able to plug it in, because it, for the plug-in, it's a little high, just to plug it, plug it in, plug, unplug it.
Well, if we make sure that we make arrangements with the, the maintenance staff to make sure we take care of that. And this isn't in regards to the tree, but it's in regards to the parade. Commissioner Arnett, you want to provide the news that Jimmy Smith provided us this morning? You went to the fire department meeting last night.
For the first time in 15 years, Smokey the Bear will be reappearing in our parade, so.
I guess that's a big deal.
I guess.
So, well.
He said December 6?
Yes, it is.
I really appreciate, because I like to have a parade on my birthday, so I really appreciate that.
Well, then, that's, we just want a holiday.
My birthday, I can't, yeah.
Well, I can take credit for the parade, you know, the JC's planned the parade, and so I won't take credit for it.
I appreciate that.
But you know, I'm sure that they did it just for your birthday.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And there will be a rain date for the parade, so if there's, if something happens.
Okay.
Which would be the 9th.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. I'm so happy about smoking, you know, I grew up with smoking.
All right. Get us back on to the next item on the agenda is the, um, consideration to approve amendment of agreement by and between Montague County Commission, City of Morgantown, and Morgantown Utility Board to form the Montaguealia Morgantown Area Geospatial Information Consortium, known as M-Magic. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second? Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion?
No.
Okay.
Are they going to present, or we're just going to push it through?
Well, would you guys like to go ahead, provide a summary?
Might be helpful for Ben.
Again, Mike Paul, GIS coordinator here in Montague County. Commissioner Sikora and Arnett, Commissioner Bloom, this has been a long-going effort to get this collaboration put together between three of the main agencies or entities here in Montague County that use GIS technology and mapping. This has been going, like I said, this has been going on for about 10 years roughly. We started in its infancy in probably somewhere around 2010 with the Montague County Geospatial Committee. And what we came to find is we never really had a solid movement going forward in regards to cost sharing, data sharing, and not duplicating our efforts in regards to those different types of data sets and how we can all benefit each other. So once the key players were kind of put in place, to be honest, City of Morgantown growing their GIS program and hiring Mr. Marvin Davis at the GIS coordinator position there, and Mrs. Taryn Moser at the Morgantown Utility Board, we started to notice that, um, from a progressive standpoint, that those employees have been put in place where we could all collaborate together. And using our supervisors' better judgment and individuals like Mr. Music at the assessor's office, who is the majority of the base mapping for Montague County, i.e., you know, the assessor data, which is all of our parcel boundaries, 911's data with the road center lines and address points, we all came together and drafted this document so we can benefit each other. And that cost sharing has been divided up equally, the data sharing as well, and we already have some interest in future growth as partners coming into this body, with possibly Star City and the other municipal agencies as well. So I just really want to thank you for approving that today, and hopefully we just keep moving forward and we can benefit and be the frontrunner in GIS here in the state of West Virginia.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the GIS group would like to speak? Mr. Music, would you like to say anything? Good morning, Mark.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mark.
Kind of echoing what Mike was saying, because it is something that's been in a process for years, and kind of with Mike's push too, along with the Geospatel Committee that he'd had when I came onboard, it helped create this, and we did have a little slide at some point, just the meetings and not being well attended, but once the city came onboard and had some ideas there, it kind of pushed our buttons a little bit more to go. And so Mike and I just kept pushing with it, and a lot of credit goes there on his end to keep this thing forward, and, you know, our share from the office is taking care of the Arrow M3 for the last several years, you know, that was coming from our budget on that end to keep this thing going, and it helps Mike on his end save a little bit of that money. So now, in the long run, with the cost sharing, it's going to even be more beneficial to us too, from some of the savings, and everyone else for the use of it. So, again, I'll echo Mike, thank you all for the approval of this in this day. It's, it's a nice big step for Mon County to kind of set that example for the state.
Thank you, Mark.
I'd like to say, I mean, is the agreement long? Yes. Is it confusing? It, it can be, but the technology is confusing and complicated, so I do think as we go along, there will be further efficiencies that can be written into the agreement and also written into how this group operates. So, I, from my perspective, I'm not, I don't want to, the perfect to be the enemy of the good. I think it's a good thing to move forward from the county's perspective. We're not harmed by the agreement. There are options to simply walk away if it's not working in a couple of years, so I really think that, I think that, there's an old saying that goes, and now that you don't have to be perfect, you can be good, and I think it's a good thing for us to be working together. I note Emily Mazzarelli, the city, Assistant City Manager is here. The city voted for this unanimously last night. MUB's waiting to see how both the city and the county would vote, so I, you know, this is another great opportunity for these, all these organizations to work together. And believe me, inside the county, it's hard enough with our own little offices, the assessor's office, the circuit court office, the prosecutor, the sheriff. It's hard enough for us to work together inside the county, let alone when you see these opportunities for intra-county government, intra-government entities to work together. So, I, from my perspective, I think it's something we should move forward, forward on. So, do you have anything you'd like?
Sure. I've been at the beginning with Mike Paul, very supportive of M-Magic, but I will not be supporting this motion. I believe this is clearly overkill, and I'm very concerned that we have been collaborating for years, very simple MOU could resolve this issue. What this is also doing is setting a precedent. We have other committees that the city and county does, meets on a regular basis, and we don't need the legal document to say we're meeting. And my final concern is, as been stated, that in other communities, this committee has turned into its own quasi-legal governmental body, and I'm very worried about that. So, for those reasons, it's not anything to do with the actual MAGIC program, it's with that this is just overkill, and I believe we've been collaborating cooperative and meeting together, and we do not need this legal document. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bloom. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, aye. All those in favor opposed?
No.
No. Okay, so it's 2-1, the measure passes.
Yes.
Okay. Consideration to approve funding up to one-third the total cost of installing two traffic control devices at the University Town Center as requested by the town of Granville. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Since she's, do you want to just explain what happened last night, and then that would help us go into working together and who you are, so.
Latina, just say who you are.
I said it right. I always call you La-tician.
Latina male administrator, town of Granville. So we had a work session last week, discussed the details about the two traffic lights, University Town Center, one at the WVU Med Center Walmart intersection, and one at Sesame Drive, Granville Square intersection. And so we took it to our council last night, and in our minutes, I'm just going to read the blurb about, from our minutes. Granville's to pay for the engineering of the two traffic signals, one at Walmart and WVU Medicine, and the other at the intersection, Sesame Drive and Granville Square. Granville to pay one-third the cost of traffic signals and the installation of, and other two-thirds to be divided equally between the county commission and Westridge Development. Westridge Development will be using the University Town Center TIF money for their share. So, that is what we had made part of our minutes, and then.
And that was the unanimous vote, I understand?
It was, yes.
And that's what we have requested, so that.
That's correct.
Okay. And Chief Corker, would you like to say anything? I know this is, and just one thing to point out, that one of the things that we talked about was trying to get a preliminary indication on temporary, a temporary solution.
That's correct.
And that's the first thing that.
The roadway on Sesame Drive is actually a city road, so we are going to do right turn only out of that road. We have calls into the property owners of Granville Square, asking for their approval. That is not a city road. So we're going to ask approval to put a traffic sign on their property as well for right turn only in the interim.
Okay.
All right?
And same thing with the University Town Center, WVH, University Town Center.
Right.
And the Walmart entrance there.
Yes.
There will be a recommendation that would be requested of a temporary solution so that this can be addressed, you know, again, the idea is to make sure that we're keeping these intersections safe.
Correct.
So we don't want to wait around months and months and months for a final solution and installation. Well, the Granville will be assisting and taking actions immediately, and again, it may be a temporary inconvenience for turning right out of Sesame Drive. You'll have to go down a roundabout, then go up to go left, but again, I think it's just, you know, it's a, it's a temporary solution to avoid anybody.
And we have already started the process to get French engineering involved in Bethesda and everyone that's going to be involved in doing the traffic study, traffic lights, everything, but it's just a process.
Right. Okay. All right, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to consider for approval, requisition number five for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2021-A Phase III Project Fund.
Moved for approval.
Second? Okay. Renetta, would you clarify?
Total requisition is for $903,694.40, and those funds partially will be paid to, as reimbursement to the developer in the amount of $3,800, and the remainder, $899, $890.44, will be paid to third-party payees, March Weston, Preston Contractors, and the Thrasher Group.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. On to the next item. Consideration to approve a funding request by the Mountain Pushkar Health Right Board of Directors to support the relocation of Mountain Pushkar Health Right Clinic and Friendship House. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Okay. And just so people understand what this was, is we had a funding request when it became known that the, the clinic and Friendship House would be moving out of the city, and the city had allocated some of its art funds for this purpose. The Mountain Pushkar Health Right came to the county and asked us for, for funding. So we had multiple conversations to make sure we understood what the dollars were being used for. So we basically had a counter offer to their original proposal. We had proposed $100,000 contribution to Mountain Pushkar Health Right to cover relocation costs, and this funding could be invoiced and reimbursed as soon as the clinic and Friendship House moves are finalized. So that's the first part of it. The second part was a $100,000 reimbursement for Mountain Pushkar Health Right Clinic program enhancements, such as the implementation of the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, into the program, programming offered by the MPHR clinic. In addition, the commission feels that there are numerous program enhancements and efficiencies that could be realized with Mountain Pushkar Health Right incorporating into the overall Ramada project, and I call that the Ramada project because that's what everybody understands it is, but it's Hazel's House of Hope, we have to start saying that. Concept that would fit under this reimbursement. So that's the $200,000 suggestion. Did we, um. Actually, in your motion, did you mention the amount?
No.
Okay, 200, amended to 200,000, sorry.
Okay, so the motion is amended, second. Okay, so that's, that's what we're actually putting forward, and I'd like to personally thank Laura Jones, Executive Director, Bruce McLendon, and Lynn Dotson for working with the commission to get to this mutually agree acceptable agreement. So, we have the motion for $200,000 funding. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, any other new business?
I do have one item. It's not on the agenda, but I do, I do need, really need your all's approval if, if you can go ahead and issue that today. We were given documentation from the auditor's office for the fiscal year 2021 audit, and I finally got all the information back from the tax office. So, in order for us to get that done in a timely manner, I really need to get this out before the holidays. So, I'm asking if you guys would approve the RFP?
So we're approving the RFP, which is a standard process we do every year, so it's really kind of falls in a bale of wick of actions that happen through your office, so I don't really have an issue with going ahead and acting on that. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay. All right. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Reports from county commissioners? Tom?
Yeah, just quickly, last night I was very excited, the city of Morgantown earmarked $20,000 for the warming shelter, and with Emily here, I will also write a letter of personal thanks, because this is not an easy situation that we have been, that we've been working with.
A group of us have been trying for years to come up with a warming shelter that would last for several years, and it's been moved around a lot, and I want to thank my, you know, colleagues for supporting that, and I do want to thank the City of Morgantown. I think we have the, what, what I like about the Ramada M project, as, as we call it, is that it isn't just a warming shelter, but there's different nonprofits that are all working together to help these individuals, so that's the first thing, so I very appreciate that. The other thing I, I do want to say is that I do want to thank my colleagues for supporting the compromise with Health Right. I think it's an excellent compromise. I've been adamant, and they were very supportive of making sure Health Right becomes part of the HMIS system, and again, those of us who work in that area, the only way to help someone is if you have five different agencies working together, you want, you don't want to overlap, and you don't want to do the same thing over and over again. So this is the best way to consolidate funds and work forward, and I'm real excited that they will now be a part of the HMIS program, and I think in the long run, that'll help not only the, the individual, but also our community.
Great. Yeah?
Yes, I attended a, a downtown stakeholders meeting the other day. It was hosted by, by some business owners downtown, and, and City Manager Kim Dawes was, was leading the meeting, and Chief Powell was there, and it was all about doing what we can to open up High Street and make it a destination spot again, various ideas without, outside dining, or, or, or different ways that alcohol can be consumed between, on the sidewalks. It was a very productive meeting, and, and I look forward to continuing to work with that group moving forward. One thing, when I was campaigning, I kept hearing from folks, how are we going to get the relationship between the city and the county improved? And I'll be honest, my experience has been, it's been anything but needing improvement. We seem to work hand-in-hand with the city all the time, and maybe that wasn't always the case, but starting back when, when Emily Mozarelli was, was the interim manager, all the way through to Kim coming on, and, I mean, with, with the Health Right Project, the GIS, the Hazel's House of Hope, the Sobering Center, all these projects we're continuing to work with the city on, I just wanted to express how appreciative I am for that working relationship, and then hope that we can keep moving forward that way. And lastly, on a personal note, last Friday night, congratulations to the Mountaineer Basketball Team for beating Pitt. I don't know if you noticed, every time we say the pledge, Commissioner Bloom turns at the end of it and says, "Beat Pitt," and, so I'm glad that came to fruition, and my, my dear grandmother on her deathbed, she didn't know me, she didn't know anybody, but she knew beat Pitt, so, so a little tap of my cap to her, and it's always a good day, and sweet Caroline, and let's go from there.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Arnett. Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had my partnership executive committee meeting, and then I did an interview with AJR, a development authority meeting, we had a broadband sync meeting, and at night we had the veterans' parade, and I want to thank Jamie Summerlin for your efforts in putting together that parade after, you know, not having it for a year. It was great to see all the people out and supporting, supporting our veterans, so thank you very much for that. Friday, I had our broadband initiative full committee meeting, and at night I did go to the MHS Bridgeport Playoff Game. It didn't go as well as we would have liked for Morgantown, but I'm glad to hear that university, you know, handled their first-round challenge very well, and I wish them luck this, this weekend as far as the next steps in the state playoff. I believe, are they the only county?
Yeah, Trinity lost.
Trinity lost and Clay Vettel lost?
Yes.
So, they're, they're the only ones representing, left representing us, so I wish, wish them luck, and hopefully I may be able to go to that game on Friday. This week, yesterday, I had a meeting with MUB between Morgantown Area Partnership Director, Russ Rogerson, and I went and met with MUB and some of their senior management to talk about some projects we're working on. Today's a regular day and a full day of work sessions, and then we have our Morgantown Area Partnership Meeting tonight. Tomorrow, Mountain Park Foundation Executive Board Meeting, Red Team Meeting, and then MMPO Meeting tomorrow night, so it's a full week, and Friday ends with staff reports. I want to thank all the GIS individuals for participating. I can't see you behind the, the screen, but thanks, everyone, for, for coming and participating, and again, working together on this project. I've worked with Tara a little bit outside of, on the broadband project, and, you know, her assistance in trying, and some of the early planning of that's been very, very helpful, so I can, I can see where this can go and how we can really work together. Granville, thank you for your, your counsel for agreeing to work with us. As I said earlier, sometimes it's hard for us to work together on our own team inside the county, let alone work with the other entities, and there's a lot of, it's not the City of Morgantown, it's with the City of Granville, it's with the Star City, it's with Westover, you know, it's, it's work with unincorporated areas to, to better, better the county, so there's a lot going on in a lot of different areas. I will note that our non-unanice vote is only the sixth one in five years. Sorry, I put a five up. So, that doesn't mean that we all rubber stamp, and no one, no, none of you are going to believe that we rubber stamp and we just agree to everything. We, we, there's areas where if we don't agree, we discuss, we discuss, and maybe we discuss some more, and at some point we may just agree to disagree, and that's where most of those six votes have been. But it does point out that, for the most part, we do strive to make sure that we're all, because we're all three are elected, and, you know, none of us have any more power than the other, but we do strive to make sure that everything that we do go forward on, that we're in unanimous approval, and we don't always have to be. It's okay to disagree, that's, that's what our country was founded on, but it's good that, you know, for the most part, it's very little times that we can't work to a solution, and we don't always end up, or end up where we started, but we do work for solutions, so I do appreciate my fellow commissioners in, in working to that end. And having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn.
Second?
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, or adjourned.